Working there, so the presentation would would look a little bit different. The pie chart with the personnel operations and capital would change where a lot more is operation and the capital wedge is smaller. And then going, yes, fund balance, I'm there. Okay, so, so with all that we've talked about in this draft for the proposed budget, it's, we still are ending with thirty point three percent fund balance in the government, I mean, in the general fund. And the max that we can have is thirty-five, but it used to be twenty-five, so we're still above the old max. And, yes.
You could jump in over top of your...
Yes, Kristen.
So, Mayor, part of what I'm a little concerned on our ending road fund balance is one point three eight six million. And we're gonna talk about some other things tonight that there's a million dollars of road fund going towards a potential other project. And so leaving us with only three hundred thousand in our road fund makes me concerned. And so every road project we have is overrun, there's always overruns. I don't think, I've hardly ever seen a road project come in under budget. And so, again, why, part of why I'm saying we'll look at one thirty-five, but there's a lot of strain on that road fund if, if we do some other things that we'll talk about later tonight, so.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
And, yeah, there's the other funds, and, so, yeah, go, what, the next steps are, I'll take what, the notes I've taken from tonight and incorporate that and then, and answer any questions that we still have outstanding and bring a proposed budget, May nineteenth, and then a final budget, June sixteenth. And any questions on anything budget-related?
No, thank you.
Just as an FYI for those that are newer and maybe a refresh for, for the others, most cities don't do a proposed budget public hearing. We've done that ever since I can remember.
I started.
You started that?
Right. No, no, I, it was done before I started, so I just kept doing it. So...
By state code is the tentative budget, which we adopted that really rough draft, and the final budget. And those are the only two public hearings, and so we've always kinda done this midpoint proposed budget after getting your feedback here. So it's one additional step the public has to participate if they choose to.
We like the transparency.
Yeah, okay. As a reminder too, on that final budget night, the state, just in the last few years, now requires a public hearing for any transfers that we're making for utility funds. We'll send out postcards, we're supposed to send out a hard copy mailer to all the utility accounts in city. Also, we have to have a public hearing to review our compensation plan, and I think that's it. In addition to the public hearing with the RDA and the city budget, so.
I do have a question, city and staff. A couple of times we've talked about community center repairs, or whether that be on the building itself or the parking lot. And we've decided to put those off, and we keep talking about, maybe across the street something's gonna happen. If this were my home, I would've been putting some money aside because I know I'm going to be adding a garage, or I know I'm gonna be putting that patio in. We've said, no, we don't wanna do those, we wanna wait until later, but I don't think we've set aside any money. Would it have been a good idea for us to have said, no, we don't wanna spend that fifty thousand dollars, that sixty thousand dollars on the community center parking lot, but let's go ahead and put that in the capital improvement budget, because we do know we need to do something, somewhat, sometime.
Yeah, that was the thing I brought up a couple meetings ago, is we should be preparing and with, when we have excess, you know, fund, maybe we could create a separate bucket.
Yep.
Center, 'cause it's gonna need something big.
That's kind of what the surplus is, but maybe not earmarked specifically.
And we do have transfers that go into the capital facilities fund that can be for any of the city facilities, future, and that's where the cemetery's coming out of. But it's, we don't have as much surplus as we're taking on more projects as we go, like stuff that's being discussed tonight.
Yeah. To be weighed, right, for sure.
So is there an amount out of the, like, the park tax balance? We could use park tax for a future...
Even, like, keep the four hundred and seventy in the facilities and take the aquatic center improvements out of park tax. So the, right above that, where your cursor is, it says four hundred and seventy, that's a transfer out. And so what I'm saying is maybe don't do that transfer out and take it out of the park tax instead.
Get out of the park tax?
Yeah.
And then put in the four seventy into...
Whatever it needs.
An account to save for a future Linden Elementary purchase, is that what you were talking about?
Let the fund balance build.
Community center.
Yeah.
Upgrade the seismic issues there have to be addressed.
We recognize there's stuff that may or may not be going on, but we definitely need some money on that date, next year, the next year, the next year, that this is all gonna come to a head, and I'd rather not. It would be awesome if we could have some money saved for that.
I agree. Tell me a dollar amount.
Two point seven million. We, we passed on the parking lot, fifty thousand dollars. I, I didn't come with an amount, but I'm willing to throw out some thoughts.
What seems reasonable as a starting point?
I mean, this, this park tax, we're bringing in annually just over a million, and this is really, it's, some of this is, is set up where we're paying recurring costs, but a lot of it is project-based, and so we could set aside a couple hundred thousand a year, if you wanna set that goal, or we could pull this four seventy right from the get-go, so it would drop this one point three million down to, what, eight hundred and some? Am I thinking that right, Kristen?
I'm, I'm trying to follow what you're saying, so, oh, taking that four hundred and seventy out of park tax instead, yes.
Four seventy out of the park tax, and then put the four seventy towards...
Yep.
A future project.
Yep. Yeah, we can let the facility CIP fund balance build without any problems from the state. And this, that's, that's, I mean, we would be building it for the reasons that we're discussing. And, and so that's, that's what that's there for. So we can't, we can't let it build in the general fund, and the park tax has to be spent on park tax qualifying things, and so, and which the aquatic center is, so.
Then four seventy, that four hundred and seventy, just...
Have it stay in there.
Stay.
Yep.
Is there a dollar amount you wanna try to have us hit every year going forward?
Two fifty.
Two fifty thousand? Okay. So just keep in mind, that's gonna make this, this fund balance on facilities, that's gonna make that grow, and it's gonna get into the millions fast, and so, okay, as long as everybody knows where it's going, so.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else like that? Or other concerns, questions on the budget in general?
Oh, looking good.
I feel like this is longer this year than last year, maybe last year I was just too new to appreciate it.
Good work, getting it all organized for us.
It's a lot of work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yes.
All right. Okay, we will now move on to item number ten. This is a discussion item that I was asked the staff to bring forward, so Seven Hundred North, right now, is a UDOT road, and Adam and I are gonna kinda present, as you all are aware, it, it was turned over to the state by the city, but it has, Utah County Boulevard is the name. We do not have, we kind of see it as a gateway to our city, significant gateway from I-15. We've always talked about this, you know, giving it better recognition. We currently do not have some of the signage on I-15 that we had in past decades, we don't really have, kind of like, an earmark. And as you come off of the I-15 freeway exit there, the PG Linden Interchange, I've also spoken with a couple of the PG council members, and they've indicated that when people say have a GPS, because Utah County Boulevard does this, almost a U shape, sometimes GPS takes them to very strange places. And so, talk, you know, we're up in the American Fork, so talking about, could we rename Seven Hundred North, at le, you know, our segment maybe stubbing into that interchange? They seem open to that. It would require getting permission from UDOT, so I spoke with the UDOT director, and he said he is open to it as long as we come up with a name, and then we have PG City also kinda do a proclamation or an intent, and then PG City to sign off on it. And then also, when we get the newer interchange just a little bit south of there, I'd love for that interchange to be a Linden-specific exit, you know, the, the fly-in, fly-off, slip ramps there. So it's, it's upon us to come up with a name, and I'll go pitch it to PG City.
So what's the section that we're talking about renaming?
Yeah, the whole... We go from, this is currently named Linden Two Thousand West. And so they, they updated the signage on that, so this road is now Linden Two Thousand West. So most likely, that's what the name of the interchange would be if, because it's, that's usually the name of the roadway they exit.
And Seven Hundred North, yeah, is also Utah County Boulevard, so Utah County Boulevard, they'd retain that, it's similar to when we let folks have Templeview Lane.
Right.
You keep the primary, but you can have a secondary name on the sign.
Yeah, this isn't updated enough.
So it's still the Utah County Boulevard.
From this intersection east is what we're thinking about, so from there headed east.
Our east, just all the way...
Up to State Street.
Up to state? Well, I have two ideas, and they're kind of variations on a theme.
Yeah.
So simp, for simplicity, just Linden Parkway, and then if we want Linden Village Parkway, if we wanted to kinda identify that, those are the two that I would throw out.
So why do you pitch that Pleasant Grove, this is all Linden City?
Well, so, here's the, here's the possibilities. Yes, if we start at that point, it's not really gonna affect PG, but if we wanted it to extend up to the, the four-way there where the I-15 interchange, that big intersection there. They have indicated an openness because some of the businesses and things along there, again, they're having GPS finding problems. Although, I imagine if we want to name something with Linden in it all the way up to the current Pleasant Grove, Linden Interchange, they might, a couple of them may find, have a sticking point with that, 'cause it's technically in their jurisdiction at that point. I don't think we'd have any...
Linden Parkway, yeah.
Do you want Boulevard to stay kind of with the theme you wanna be naming?
Utah County Boulevard primary, and then secondary could be like Linden Gateway.
So we do have Linden Park Drive down here.
Yeah.
Just Linden Parkway might be kinda close to that.
That's true.
So Linden Gateway...
Linden Gateway?
Linden Crossing, Linden Vill, these are some names when we, you know, had our Seven Hundred North Committee back in two thousand fifteen on that document, we woodshedded different names for this zone and area, so some of the words that came, like Crossing Village, Stringtown Way, Heritage Gateway, yeah, I like the Parkway.
Linden Village Crossing.
So, I don't know, what, what do y'all think?
Lundberg Lane. I, I, I do like Linden Parkway, I do. Or Linden Boulevard.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with either one of those two, and pretty simple.
I like having Linden on it personally.
Yeah, it's gotta have Linden in it.
The primary reason I'm going for this is get Linden named on this.
Linden Boulevard.
Linden something.
Parkway, I, I think...
I think Adam's right in that there's one already kinda close to that.
And it's a, a physical description as well of a Parkway.
Right. Linden Gateway Crossing? It is a gateway, I mean, it's the, it's the entrance to the city right there.
Is there an Orem Boulevard?
Yes, there is.
It's, it's parallel to State Street.
It's a small one just off of State Street.
Something to keep in mind, I mean, it would have a sign that looks like this on the roadway, it's gonna have the state route number.
You don't want Lake, Linden Lake, uh...
But like that, Seven Hundred North would be our Linden name, hopefully.
Well, the North County would go away, so it would be, Seven Hundred North would go away, this would go away.
They would keep the North County Boulevard, is what Carlos told me.
Oh, I thought they were gonna re...
No, Carlos said they would want North County to remain. As it, so it'd be a, like, our Linden...
We're just renaming Seven Hundred North.
A secondary, yeah, to North County.
Need UDOT's permission to do that, but that's our, that's our address coordinate as a city.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could do, but if we want to do it all the way up to the...
I thought they had said they would take this, change North County Boulevard heading east to a new name.
Possibly, we can have that conversation, yeah.
Okay. Because that's, that's why their addresses are causing problems, is 'cause North County primarily runs north-south.
Up to American Fork.
Yeah.
For me, it's awkward to think about doing it from Pleasant Grove Boulevard with a Linden something for that part that's in Pleasant Grove, I, I just, I'm not interested in that, I would prefer the, at the...
Yeah, right now, North County runs Clear Route from, from Alpine all the way down here.
I mean, that's literally where it ends, is right there, around the airborne-ish area.
No, it goes up to State Street.
No, it goes all the way to State Street.
State Street.
It's a big U.
So North County Boulevard goes to State Street.
Seven Hundred is State, uh, North, North County.
I don't know if they have, I don't think this is, this is too old, they don't have the updated signs, so, yeah, it's North County, starting at State Street.
So you guys get to be a part of history here, coming up with a name. Well, I'm hearing, okay, so here's the words we said, Crossing Village, Stringtown Heritage, it sounds like a...
Gateway.
Gateway Boulevard, but you were worried about Boulevard was another one someone liked?
Yeah, Linden Boulevard, I'm thrilled as can be, but it's not a...
Yes.
I'm jumping on my sword one way or the other.
I'm exactly where Van is.
You like Linden Boulevard?
I do.
Yep.
It's so plain.
That is part of the appeal.
No imagination.
That is part of the appeal, I agree, but it is...
You guys are no far...
Clear, concise.
That's not my brain.
I mean, if we're doing split-named streets, I'd like it to be the big text.
What did you say?
Two point seven million, I'm going back to the two point, if we're doing split naming and there's...
North County Boulevard, Linden Boulevard.
Then whatever we choose, I'd like it to be the larger text.
But I want us to fight the battle that it's one sign and it's...
I would love it, one sign.
Linden Boulevard.
I would love North County Boulevard no longer there.
Highway number.
And you don't want to try to get it from the current I-15 interchange intersection.
I think it's messy.
We would have to change all those addresses in Pleasant Grove.
Yeah. I don't see Pleasant Grove really liking that.
I think we could get our friend in Pleasant Grove, in fact, I swear I've had a conversation...
Well, they were the one that started this conversation at the city.
They, they mentioned this.
Yeah.
How can you guys haven't changed that?
But they probably wouldn't want it to say Linden. They'd be open to a different name.
Yeah, they were probably thinking we'd change it to something different, but not with Linden in it.
Maybe we could go Saint John's or something.
I would love to have Linden on it.
We can have it sponsored, Chick-fil-A. Somebody pays us for, every year we change it.
Yeah, I think, I think let's give Mayor the leeway to, I mean, I, if they're open to it, which they sure have seemed open to it, let's, let's try for the whole lane. I could, and the worst they can say is no, and they might.
Well, they could say no and then spit.
Well, that's the name we want, they could, they could agree to it, or...
I wonder if, even at that intersection, you could just, I, I might talk to UDOT too, or, or staff, what if there was just even a sign that said Linden Arrow, like, this way, not necessarily naming the road different, but at least people know Linden is that way, directional sign. And then we have the official name start there in our boundary.
They have one similar to that on State Street right now, where it says Seven Hundred North one way and then...
Yeah.
The other, the other way.
Yep.
It's a little, a little hard to see there.
They could say Linden Boulevard at that intersection with an arrow, directional, but it's not, maybe not officially changed for addressing for those PG addresses. I don't know.
You're, you're saying clear from, to the, the freeway interchange intersection?
Possibly.
This one?
Yeah.
That's...
Just said, or just a directional, it doesn't necessarily have to rename that segment of the road, I'm just think, thinking, so people know Linden is that, when you get to that intersection, Linden's this way, PG straight, AF to the left.
Diana brought this up at the city of the cities or whatever meeting that was, so have they, have you talked with them at all, have they said?
Who?
Pleasant Grove.
A few of them, yeah. Most of the council.
I thought up here off the interchange, there's a sign that says Linden. Uh, maybe not. Oh, maybe that's it. There you go.
That's it. That little sign for all those lanes.
I've never noticed that. But it's, it's a good couple, few hundred feet from the intersection.
Yeah, I, I think part of the challenge is, is that North County Boulevard, it, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't...
And the turnway for that's clear over there, so then...
Just makes it more confusing if you continue to call it North County Boulevard when it's heading east-west, then, so, that's where I was just thinking, this is an easy break, it's right out our border, basically, but...
So it looks like we're all pretty much in agreement, let's figure out what the details will be, and...
Yeah.
Seems like if once it's in, you can do whatever.
That's, uh, your call, Steve.
I know, I've tried.
I'd like the little more imagination.
Why are you gonna pout, 'cause you don't like Linden Boulevard?
Linden Gateway Boulevard. How about that? Make everybody happy.
Too long.
Too long.
I get it.
Yeah.
Especially fitting on a sign.
Too word.
Make it readable, right?
I know, yeah. By the time you read it, you're faster.
When we're all done, what have we accomplished? I mean, yes, we've called that Linden Boulevard, right now, it's Seven Hundred North.
North County.
But North County is still retaining something, right? If we can get rid of the North County...
You know, even people that live in Linden, when I say Seven Hundred North, they're like, wait, where is that? It just, Seven Hundred doesn't have any, it does, I think, if we're, if we have a prominent road in Linden, that's the name of our city, that will stick, people will know, it's branding, we're branding ourselves here.
International retailers.
Yes, okay, well, I think we got enough information, we'll go from here and have the conversation, see what we can do. I'm sorry, Steve, I, I didn't get any traction beyond Linden Boulevard.
All right.
So...
We're solid with it.
Lincoln, you're, you're Boulevard man, Cole?
Yeah, I'm Boulevard man.
Okay, all right. That sounds good. Okay. So that ends our open council meeting agenda items.
Oh, we've got one more.
One more, eleven.
Oh, grand, sorry, it's grand marshals. Okay.
We had a list of names that you proposed, there was one more that I was thinking about today, and I don't know that we've done this, but Mike Vancheri, what about Rhonda? She would, it would be one grand marshal, but...
I was thinking about that, and with all the duties and everything involved, I know, there was past years where we did, like, service members, kind of, that had been deployed, and so we, you know, you saw on the list, like, service members, single, 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 like, a group of them. I was thinking of Rhonda as well, I was like, is there someone else who is a single, that they could share the load together, or, but she might be thrilled with that. Let's see. I had, did you all have names that you were considering? I, I had sent a few names to Adam and Heath, did that, these are past those that have served, but we have potential, did you see my list of potential names?
Looking at it here.
Okay.
This is another one I'm so passionate about that I could die. I, I, of that list, I love Mike and Jill Jorgensen, I mean, all they've done for, for Historic Preservation Commission. I love Ed, Ed and Valerie Platt as well, love Darryl, I, those were probably the three that stood out to me on that list, that I would love to throw my name behind, and, and any, you know, there's even a few I don't even recognize on that list, and that's fine for me as well.
If you have any to add, council?
And you had the Powells on there, Randy and, yeah, so that was the name that came top for me.
Yeah, this is an email that went out Friday from Adam, has Carolyn's suggestions on there.
Yeah, so if you guys have any other names that we should add, and this can be a working list for ongoing years as well, and sometimes people say they're not available now, but maybe later, but if we have a, a working list to draw from, let's add to it if there's anyone else that stands out. So who, who would you want to reach out first?
Who'd be your first pick, Van, on that list?
The Jorgensons.
That, that was my thought as well.
I think they're gonna say no, I'll just, but, so give me a second.
It was my thought, because I know how much she would not want it.
I bet we could get him to do it.
All right, just, so, give me three.
That'd be my first pick.
One, two, three, who would be your second?
Platts would be my second.
And I had Platts.
Can it be around?
I know they've got a mission call, right?
Yeah.
I had that same thought.
They got, they're getting back, he's being reinstated as our pa, no, wait, no, he's leaving.
Yeah, he's leaving.
The other patriarch.
They're reinstating the previous.
So when they get back, we'll have to keep them as a future, sorry.
Darryl was my other second, I mean, I'm not passionate about this, I, I feel like I'm monopolizing it to move forward.
But I, I would love to add Rhonda on there, and then there's, there's another sing, you know, person that could tag team with her.
And I know Darryl and, and Dana know Rhonda really well, that would seem like a pretty okay fit right there, they serve together.
I would love to see if it was...
That's a, that, that could be a really...
Vancheri and, and Magleby.
Formal council members.
They're all very, very tied.
And they can work together.
And she can do what she can do.
Yeah.
I like that one a lot.
Yeah.
Are you'd like me to ask Jorgensen's first? Is that what she would like, council? And then Darryl and Dana second?
Both such great choices, I'm happy either way.
Lincoln, would you rather do Rhonda and Darryl, and maybe that, maybe this year seems like the first year within passing, maybe, maybe it's better to do them as our first choice and Jorgensen's as a second? You all right with that?
I get there very easily.
Everyone all right with that?
If Rhonda were up for that, I would love that.
Let's do it.
Okay. Sounds great.
So, so repeat who you chose again here?
Darryl and Dana Magleby teamed up with Rhonda Vancheri, former council service people. Darryl and Dana Magelby teamed up with Rhonda Vancherri, former council service people and their spouse.
And if Rhonda can or won't, I'm okay with Magelby's doing it.
Yeah, I'm agreed.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Sounds great. Thank you, council. All right. Now, if we could do a quick five-minute break. And then we'll do our roll call to go into the closed session. Is that all right, everybody?
Great.
Yep.
Oh, good. I've heard it's really great. Yeah.
Yeah, but if it's all sustainable, I think.
How many would you like?
Just two.
We could bring other fennel.
I've already declared it's okay. So then, what if it's, it's two tickets? So you use this promo code when you go in to get your preservation. The trick is you put in the promo code before you sell your seats. And then it will just sound like she's a plus.
Max for the Jersey Boys?
Yeah.
I've been to a play over there.
Do, how many, do you have family on it? I, as you can see, this is only one stack, actually. Yeah.
It's one of these for two.
Yeah.
Jersey Boys is a little harder sell for my younger, more.
But it's also very entertaining. It's just like. And it's like the family friendly one too.
I've seen it at two o'clock.
Yeah.
Where it was.
Not as family.
Well, no, they said it was a family friendly. It could have been another stack.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Is this just for your best friends or something?
No, no, no. So do, how many do you?
For you two. This, this is good for two people.
And so if you have family or friends you want to bring.
When does Jersey Boys end?
So I'm on a board at the roof.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So this ones you have to use by May third, but have another stack if you need more tech that goes until May third.
Does it close at all?
Yeah, I think so. Do you want more?
So you use this, this is good for two?
Yeah, and then you use this, um, promo code. Mayor, how many would you like? These are for the Jersey Boys.
Have, have you been there yet?
I've been, well, we were there for the.
Your father's.
Jersey Boys was awesome.
Yeah, so how many I can give you? You just use this promo code and then, oh, the other thing is you take this physical ticket with you.
And you exchange it at the ticket office the night. You, you book it online. You get your seats reserved and then you have to go to the ticket office. The night you show up and then change it, check in. And they give you the ti, tickets that you need to walk past.
Where's your ticket?
Yeah, great.
Okay, so.
No, wait, where's the number?
So Cole, he's been, he, he's been so great, like the, the whole Ruth thing. He's just been like, I wanna. Start on that art.
So when you turn it in, they want to track and that's the number they gave me.
Can I do?
So each one is two, so you can have.
Nine. Are you nine?
I'm nine.
No, just these ones you have to get before May third.
Okay, so.
But number one in everybody's heart.
Are you guys, I recommend the show. This was a good one. Are there other?
I like free.
Free ninety-nine?
Oh, these ones are.
If there's Cinderella, I'll take a Cinderella.
These ones I have to get because they had a boo-boo. These ones are the ones.
What do you mean?
So these ones I refer for gestures.
You're gonna have to give this back?
No, you can, you can have that one. In gestures. So I have these. These are all gestures.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyone like you. I gave some to senior center. I gave all the staff.
Awesome. That's so wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, that is very kind. Yeah, no, my, my pleasure. You guys are awesome. So thanks for all you do for, for us. I, they had a new program for the high school. So I booked it in that laser, but I guess they didn't get rental consent. So that stack is like, uh, in a swage of the.
If you do see Jersey Boys, I recommend get seats towards the right side because they have.
I've got some free tickets to Jersey Boys.
The layout of this, the layout of the performance.
Each one that you can use for two tickets?
Like a, a lot. Well, they, they do something interesting at the stage where like, so if you're in the audience, go towards the right. Cause they go deeper into the right side and the, the left side, they have a thing in the front that stays. And a lot of what they're doing is moving center to right a lot of the night. And.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
That's exciting.
It's, it's not a round stage. So if you have your stage, they've got like a thing right here that they, they want them to stand. If it's here, there's deep.
So if you're facing their stage, that stage there, you want to be over.
And also I recommend the, the lawyers often turn their back to the audience. So if you're sitting on the right side, you'll see their faces more. Cause there's a, for some reason they turn their backs to the front.
It's six every day anyway.
I mean, I'm gonna break that and I'll sleep. I'll sleep well.
Good.
Awesome.
Uh, yeah, I think so. Every, every time it gets different.
Okay. Well, shall we get this going so we can get home, everybody?
Let's do it.
That's awesome.
Let's, that's still some work.
Whatever we have, Mike has an extra twenty minutes.
Okay. All right, let's get going.
Sorry, Mike.
Back here, I will make a motion to go into closed session. The city council will discuss a potential purchase or sale of real property and pending or possible litigation for Utah Code.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. All in favor?
Van Broderick.
Aye.
Aye.
Cole Hooley, aye.
Lincoln Jacobs, aye.
Aye.
Jake Hoyt, aye.
Steve Stewart, aye.